All right, well, welcome to the Planning Board Meeting for tonight. We have a proposed agenda here of 6:30 Board Business, 6:40 Continued Public Hearing. My understanding that is going to be continued till October 2nd, followed by King Street Special Permit Clarifications, 6:55 Discussion from Collective Cannabis on Amending Hours, and then A and R for 600 Great Road that confirm what we believe we're working with agenda for tonight.
The agenda I have.
Okay, we have minutes from the August 7th, 2025 meeting. Do we have any comments on those minutes?
I just have one comment. It's a sentence that I think just needs a little bit of work. So on page four, item three regarding National Grid, it would be the one, two, third full paragraph. The first sentence reads Baker asks what work is going to be done in this area stated maintenance upgrade for the live structures. So it just feels like it's missing something, but that's it. Thank you.
Do you have a proposed fix for that sentence in there?
I don't because I don't really know who's the person who said stated maintenance upgrade. I don't know if it was you or somebody else. So someone will just need to take a quick look at that video portion.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds like a correction that is easily made if you're willing to approve with that correction.
Okay, take a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approved minutes as presented with the correction.
Second.
Okay, we do roll call vote for Zoom meetings. Okay, Bartlett?
Bartlett, yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Daryl, yes.
Let Cooper vote.
All right, we have bills. Did I see that we have one bill for $38.95 to Green International?
Correct, that's one of the ongoing peer reviews.
Yeah, I'm not sure what our procedure for signing it is on a virtual meeting. Do you just take a vote and then we'll stop by, somebody stopped by the office to sign for it, or what's the procedure there?
Yep, so my thought process was there if you approve both the bills and the upcoming A and R, you'll have two things to stop in to sign. So I just use that protocol.
Okay, I can, I could stop by Town Hall to do that.
$38.95 is for what vendor?
Green International.
And for what project?
Green Lochner Company, sorry, they changed their name. But yeah, it was the Stormwater Permit Review for 64 Beaver Brook. Okay, do you have a motion to accept the bill?
I make a motion to accept them, accept the bills as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, Bartlett?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Daryl, yes. So the bill is approved. I'll sign, I'll stop by and sign for it. Okay, member input and updates on projects? Anybody have any updates they'd like to relay?
Looks like the bank is getting pretty close. They've got all the soded and everything else. I mean, all the dirt in, looks like they're getting ready to finish up the exterior. I don't know where they're at in the interior, but it looks like they're proceeding as diligently as they can.
Yeah, and I saw today they're pouring the sidewalk down, or they installed the granite curbing for the sidewalk down Great Road.
You did, we did, did anybody notice, or has everybody noticed that these, the crossing lights have been installed and they're actually working now?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that, I know the one down by Mill Pond because I cross on that one a lot on my walks.
The one on King Street works. Trying to think where else there were. Yeah, and there's another one further up on King Street, right by where Shattuck cuts in. That one was working as well. There are, it looks like they're all working actually about time.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep, so the one update I can offer on ADUs is that Cooper and I have a meeting scheduled next week with MAPC just to discuss what to, what's next on updating the ADU bylaw. I'm trying to get ready to bring something forward to the Planning Board to discuss. And we do have a request from the Zoning Board of Appeals to make sure we invite them when the Planning Board has a discussion on ADUs. They've got some ideas they'd like to see incorporated.
Okay.
Has anyone actually applied for an ADU?
Um, we've, over the last several years, we've had a handful. So I expect it will add, you know, what's number of housing units to town, giving some homeowners the option of, you know, of helping, as, you know, helping homeowners age in place or helping young families find a new place to live. But I don't imagine that it'll be a, you know, significant number of ADUs.
But relative to, since the updated law, we haven't not had any new applications for them?
Um, yeah, actually, the building commissioner has seen a couple of applications.
Could we get a summary of those when you do come forward with the updated A and R ADU bylaw discussions in the future here? Just so they have kind of a feel for what, what is already being taken advantage of by the residents?
Well, yep, I'll ask for an update.
Thank you. I think we have to slow down a little bit or we're gonna blow through our agenda too quickly here. Uh, any other updates? And I don't see, do we have any public dialed in at this point? I don't see any.
Um, so there are a couple attendees. We know Morgan has a representative for 550 King Street. I'm not familiar with the other attendee, but I recommend that if you ask if anybody has public comments, they just raise their hand.
Yeah, I didn't have the right screen up. I didn't see the attendee, the other attendees. Okay. All right, not hearing, not seeing any hands being raised for public input. Uh, move to the next one, which is I guess I'll be looking for a motion to continue the 64 Beaver Brook public hearing until October 2nd. And do we have a time allocated for that?
Um, I would suggest we do that near the beginning of the meeting. It sounds like they're closing in on being done with Conservation Commission.
Okay.
Cooper, is that, does that sound right?
Yeah, I think I had 6:40.
Okay. All right, so could I have a motion to continue the hearing till 2 October at 6:40?
So moved.
Check it.
Okay, Bartlett?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Daryl, yes. Okay. The 6:45 Discussion on the Special Permit Clarification, do we have somebody from the project for this?
Um, yes, I see that Morgan Pearson is available. Let me promote to panelists for this discussion.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you very much. I believe Stephen Rodman may be the other person, the mystery person waiting, Maran. I don't know if you see Stephen. If so, he's our attorney helping with the financing of the property, which is related to our request this evening. I don't know if we'll need him, but I asked if he had time to join in case there's any questions above my, my head, any legal questions.
Could you just open with what's the purpose of your request tonight and what's driving that so that everybody's?
Absolutely, of course, of course. So we had put a request to the board. As part of our special permit approval, there is a condition, I believe it's condition number 25, that states that we may not transfer any of our parcels to a person or entity without the Planning Board's approval of that application. We are requesting that three of the parcels as part of the subdivision of the 550 King Street project be granted approval by the board to be conveyed to affiliated entities in the interest of us working with banks to sort of to refinance different elements of the property. I'm not sure if the, our letter from our, from TEC, from Rick Freiberg and our civil engineer was provided to the board, but it outlines the three different parcels that we are referencing. And I believe, Cooper, I know you shared at least with me, the site plan that outlined those parcels, which shows the existing IBM buildings as well as a future potential garage. Those are the parcels we are working right now with, with the bank, the local bank to refinance. And as part of that diligence, the banks and our attorney pointed out that we need board approval because the entity names are changed. It's fairly, it's fairly, I don't want to say administrative, but it's nuanced. It's not changing anything. It's just, it's when the entity names changes so we can refinance each of these parcels. There is a provision in the special permit that we were not, or at least I was not aware of as I wasn't here at the beginning. So that's what we're talking about.
Okay, do any of the board members have any questions?
It's still going to be owned by the LePoli Company, I would assume correctly.
Correct.
Yeah, that was my question there is was there any plans on transferring ownership of the LLCs to any other entities?
This is purely a refinancing request with internally to our company.
Okay.
What was that?
Go ahead, Anna.
I was just gonna ask, so with, with this new entity, so does Mr. LePoli retain majority ownership in the new entity?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Because I think the one clarification, and maybe it might be outside of the special permit, but I mean, in terms of, as I said, keeping us as a partner in the whole process here is if majority ownership of any of the LLCs change, we would like to be notified of that.
Understood.
There because this structure does allow you to change ownership of the LLC here, and I want to just clarify that we want to be notified if, if the majority owner of the LLC changes. I understand what you need to do for your financing, but I want to make sure we understand if there's any actual underlying change of ownership.
Totally understand, and maybe stepping out of my legal understanding. But my understanding currently as the special permit is written, as the condition is written, that, and that's why we're before you this evening, that even if we are changing entities from 100% owned to 100% owned like we are, we require your approval. So I think your request is sort of even a lower threshold to that, but we understand it either way.
Yeah, it's just once you start setting up, to me, these are, you know, become opaque organization, you know, company organizations here that we start losing visibility into actual ownership, and I want to make sure we maintain that.
Completely understand.
Okay. Any, anybody else on the board have any questions?
No.
No. Okay, I'll take a motion to, did you give us a proposed motion in the cover page here? Let me just, I don't know how complex that motion needs to be. Um, I'll take a motion to change the ownership designations of Lot U8-10-4, U8-10-6, and U8-10-7 to 550 King Street Parcel P3 LLC, 550 King Street Parcel 200 LLC, and 550 King Street Parcel 100 LLC. Is that?
Still moved.
Second.
Bartlett?
Yes, approved.
Mark?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And Daryl, yes. So we approved the administrative change on the designation of the ownership.
Thank you.
One quick question from Morgan. When, when do you think we're gonna have you before us again to give us an update of where we're at with the construction process and?
I don't know if tonight's appropriate. I am prepared to share a preview of that if you would like, or if it makes sense for this. But otherwise, in talking with Town Manager Duggan, it was, we were probably shooting for next, the next meeting you had in person.
That's fine. I just wanted to know just when you think you're gonna be back before us. That's all.
Absolutely. We want to be responsive and also accurate, but again, I, in talking with Maran, you know, I was prepared tonight to share if you like, but, but also happy to, you know, have a little more time with it and share at the next meeting.
I'm good for it being at the next meeting because I prefer it to be in person rather than.
Right.
I would, I would as well.
Okay, that works for us.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the discussion from, with, about Collective Cannabis' request to amend their hours of operation. Do we have a representative from, from them for this discussion?
Nope.
I don't see Mr. Giannetta on yet.
We are a couple of minutes early.
Yeah.
Does he know it's a Zoom call, by the way, Maran?
Um, yes, Cooper sent out specific information again today, just in case people didn't understand that.
And and we don't have a representative from 600 Great Road yet either, so we can't necessarily go out of order?
Yeah, not as far as I can tell.
Yeah. Okay.
But I don't believe we're gonna get anybody for 600 Great Road. Are we, Maran? That's just the A and R for the, for the Matheson's for the Gary's Farm Stand property?
Um, it would be a little unusual for nobody to show up.
Yeah.
But you're right, it is always a possibility.
Yep.
I think in general, one of the things that we should make a point that somebody from the applicant shows up, whether it's video or in person, because otherwise we're just conducting business almost in an anonymous way. Can't say that word. So I always prefer to have an applicant before us.
I agree, but it's a planned A and R, so. All right.
All right. And was somebody from Collective Cannabis planning on dialing in or?
Um, yeah, we did hear back from, what did we hear back? Yeah, we got a simple thank you back from Mr. Giannetta. So I interpret that to mean they will be here for that discussion.
Okay. All right. They may have to edit out five minutes of dead time in the, in the recording then.
Yeah.
You should do this more often. I like smoking at our meetings.
You in your own little room that you?
I am, I'm out, actually, I'll semi outside. I know it's not good for you. I know, I know.
Yeah.
In my few vices.
If you smoke during meetings, can I drink during meetings?
How about we drink and smoke? But maybe a little bourbon in the scotch, Bartlett? Are you good for that?
Yeah.
All right. Well, we can put it in coffee cups like, like Phil Russell, I shouldn't say that. I don't know. A hundred years ago.
Oh, and just one thing, I will not be able to attend next month's meeting. I'll be out of town there, so.
Okay, does it make more sense to move that to another date?
Let me just, let me find my calendar here.
So that of October 2nd, you could do perhaps October 9th or 16th?
Uh, I can't do the 9th. I couldn't do the 16th.
Uh, I can't, I don't think I can do the 16th. I think I'll be out of town.
Okay, this is why we have these discussions.
Oh yeah, I'm gonna see Toby, no, not Toby Keith. Who am I going to see? Keith Urban? Somebody, I don't, somebody I don't want to go see. Not a big, not a big country western kind of guy.
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, if you have the rest of the board for the second, you know, we can just, you know, try to keep moving progress forward there.
Okay, yeah, Jeff has shared that he would be able to do the October meeting, so.
Okay.
It's like we should leave it. Thanks for the update, though. It's helpful to know.
Yeah.
Do you want to try to do the A and R while we wait for Mr. Giannetta?
I wasn't sure if somebody from them, a representative from them was going to be dialing in. And since we have a post-it, you know, I don't know if they would be waiting before they dialed in or not. Because I did have a couple of comments I just wanted to make on that. I could make anyway.
Maran, where the hell Maran go?
I'm still here. I'm looking for a phone number.
Mark, are you laying on the floor now just looking up at your ceiling?
Pretty much.
So I guess one thing I would like, maybe this just highlights something is, is again, maybe as an informal notice to the various applicants to ask them to please come like 10 minutes early and put that in terms of their, their meeting invite. Uh, when we, you know, they make, we schedule these so that if we do run early, we can start trying to push through things instead of just waiting. Because like we have no idea if these are gonna dial in or not, and it's 6:55 now. So we could adapt that as a, as a new standard procedure.
Well, normally it's live, so we don't normally have that issue, but.
Yeah. But even live, we should ask them to show up a couple of minutes earlier prior to their start time there because unless I'm just running too efficient of a meeting here to.
Maybe that's what it is.
For.
Uh-oh, I went out. Uh-oh.
Yeah, because.
Little technical emergency. My cigar went on. And ashes all over me. But happened to be by cheap cigars, I guess.
Okay, so with this discussion on the amending hours, I mean, I'm not inclined to have the discussion if the applicant is not here. Because to me, there's no, we don't need to discuss it because we have operating hours as it is, and if they're not here to represent what the change, I'm not sure we need to have a discussion. I don't know how the members of the board feel about that.
I'd agree with that.
We do have two attendees. The names just aren't familiar, but I don't know how we would know if it's the applicant.
Let's see, there's the.
As a co-host, I believe that Cooper, as a co-host, I believe you can contact them.
The name on the app, the request is David Giannetta?
Yeah, that's not one of the names, but I'm not seeing a chat option, just.
Yeah, there, there's no chat options available in Littleton meetings.
Okay.
You can only allow them to talk or promote them.
Uh, we can ask them, if any, if the, any of the attendees are representing Collective Premium Cannabis, could you raise your hand?
I don't know if we can see that either.
Uh, yeah, we should see them raise their hand. We saw it before. Under, under the participants attendees box. All right, seeing none. What's the board's desire?
I do.
Go.
There's a box at the bottom that says lower all attendees' hands. Does that mean they're raising their hands or no?
No, nobody raises their hand.
Okay.
Okay.
Per your recommendation, I think we should move on to the next item on the agenda.
Yep. And that will take no action on the request amended. And that will take no action on the request to amend the hours, they can re-request board time.
Can we just continue it till next month, or do they have to do it?
I'm not sure what the actual procedure is for. For, and then, you know, for this discussion. Marin, is there a standard procedure we do? Do we, do we defer them, or do we tell them that if they want time to re-request it?
Um, we'll reach out to Mr. Giannetta and see if he would like to move forward with it at the next meeting.
Okay. Okay. Now we have the A and R is a non-scheduled agenda for till seven oh five, and again, I think we're in that situation, we don't know if somebody's gonna dial in or not.
Um, yeah, actually Sherri Gould has just joined.
Oh, I see now, yep.
Yep.
If she's gonna be the only representative, we can probably proceed.
Um, so Sherri, do you anticipate anybody else representing this A and R?
No, just myself.
Okay, so we can proceed with the with the A and R.
Thank you.
Welcome to our meeting, would you mind giving us a quick overview of what's, what's the? What's going on?
This is this six hundred Great Road property, it used to be the Wilkins farm.
Yep.
And. The Wilkins family had a. Relationship with Tender Crop, as you may recall. And they had two meetings with you where they had brought in some. Not complete and and not detailed plans. And we, the last meeting, we were in front of you with attorney. Tom Harrington from Town Council or Chris Heap, I forget which one represented the town. But they were saying that it was up to the building inspector to determine. Usability and. And whether or not it would be in allowed use. And the Wilkins family is liquidating the assets of the father who's passed away. And we decided that it would be. More beneficial to the estate. To liquidate the assets as is rather than try to. Fit Tender Crop's uses. Into an allowed use. Before the planning board first and then afterwards to the building inspector. So we've gone back out into the marketplace and discovered that Mathissons are very interested. In purchasing the farm stand. And the greenhouses in that area. And the other lot. The one acre lot that we're looking to subdivide, not subdivide, but to A and R off this plan. Qualifies as a building lot, so we're just looking for an A and R to. Separate the one acre off and then to sell. Part of it to the Mathissons if they're still in the picture and part of it is a building lot, and that way we would repeat. Repeat the same amount that Tender Crop was offering without the long delays of permitting and the permitting process.
Does the board have any comments on the? Plan presented? Anna?
Uh, thank you, Sherri, for sharing this information, so it sounds like it's going to be both. Potential building lot and also. Associated with farming.
Retention of the pre-existing farming use, that's correct.
Exactly.
So I think it's a good use.
Yeah, so the one question that I have is on the documents that were provided to us for the A and R. I thought it was supposed to have an engineer stamp and it, the one that was. Given to us as members did not, so I wanted to confirm whether or not. We have a version that has an engineer stamp.
The engineer delivered the Mylar to me, which I delivered to Cooper in Marin's absence, and honestly, Cooper and I didn't review it to see if the stamp is on it. But it was done by an engineer, and if it's not stamped, I'll have him run over tomorrow and stamp it.
Well, I I think that typically speaking, we we need to have documents that have that stamp, and then if. If it's not so, then. You know, we we need to make sure it does, especially before anything gets signed.
Absolutely. I'll check with Marin and Cooper in the morning. I I have a feeling, if you don't, if you'll excuse me for interrupting again. Anna, I have a feeling that when Cooper asked me to send him the. The electronic version for the board. I may have inadvertently sent him the.
It's got, Marin's showing it, it's got a stamp on it.
Before the stamp, yeah, I apologize.
So Marin's version has a stamp.
Yeah, that's certainly a fair question because the electronic version that was sent over did not have the stamp, but the. Original Mylar does have a.
I take responsibility for that error, I apologize.
We'll let it go.
And so.
I made a lot of mistakes.
And just to confirm, nothing changed from the. Version that we saw to the Mylar version?
No, it did not.
Um, yeah, the the surveyor signed, um, on the surveyor, signed and dated and. P E Albury stamped and dated it.
All right, thank you.
Uh, any other board members have any questions? Um, Sherri, I I just have, maybe it's a, it's more of a comment. Uh, and it's. I I think technically I see that the plan meets all of the zoning requirements for an A and R. Plan there, but I have one question. Uh, there in terms of the existing buildings. Uh, and the impervious on it in the in the water protection district there that. It just barely squeezes in with the, as a three acre parcel. And that if you split the one acre off and then it changes ownership. You can't use the combined ownership any longer to ensure that that lot, the buildings and impervious on that lot are complete, are within zoning. So are you creating some kind of little time bomb here that? Because once you split it off, my understanding from. The Z B A perspective, when I was on there is the, once you split the lot and it's not under common ownership, the grandfathering of the non-conformity. Conformities does not preserve.
I don't know what non-conformities you're referencing.
Uh. There may, may or may not be, I think it's related to the amount of impervious that's on the lot. Uh, there, because I know that that number was high. Uh, as a three acre lot. Uh, when we were doing the other things, it hasn't come for us formally, but I just. Just bring that to your attention. Uh, there that. That if it does become non-conforming, the non-conformity is not grandfathered.
Um. I accept that information and will bring that to the attention of. The purchaser of their farmland two acres.
I I just mentioned it because like I said. As a, as joint owners, as single year ownership. Your, the lot split doesn't matter, but if the, when it sells to a different entity, it changes that. I think.
Yeah, understood.
I think the clarification, Daryl, when when we saw Tender Crops. Their parking lot was a lot bigger than the existing parking lot that's at Gary's Farm Stand, so maybe Gary's. Is probably fine the way it is, and my.
I don't know, it's something I think they need to pay attention to, just a recommendation, they pay attention to it. Because you, you know, I I wouldn't want to, I would just bring up that it's. If it does become non-conforming, it's like a little time bomb. Uh, there that could affect affect its future.
Appreciate the input.
Okay. Um, so with that, I'll look for a motion to accept the A and R as presented.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, Bartlett?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Daryl, yes. So your A and R has been approved, I can. Come by Town Hall tomorrow morning sometime and sign both the A and R and the bills.
We all have to sign the A and R.
All have to sign the A and R.
Yeah, we all have.
I'm not, I'm not in a rush, if any of you are away, I'm not in a rush for that.
Okay.
And I appreciate your deliberation tonight and your input. And I personally feel like this is a fine use for the property, a continued farming in our community, and the farm community thanks you.
Okay. Uh, with that, I see no other business on our agenda, I'll take a motion to close the meeting.
Still moved.
Second.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And Daryl, yes, thank you, everybody.